Jeff, is that you?
Yes.
Excellent. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, great, great, great. Well, um, go ahead and get started and call them. We need to order. Uh, can we take the roll?
Yes, Mary Kate Murin.
Present.
MacArthur Starks.
Present.
Vicky Kraus. Eric Hagopian.
Here.
Jeff Sattler.
Here.
And Janay McDonald.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, why don't we kick off with our fiscal year 2020 budget, uh, cash flow projection?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, that's John's.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll, I'll take this one. All right. Hi, everybody. Um, so cash flow, you currently see that we have approximately $2.6 million available at TD Bank. Um, this projection is through mid-October, which is the first financial, financial aid dispersment cooldown funds for the fall semester. Um, it's projected that we're going to maintain a sufficient amount of funds through mid-October. Um, and that we will not need to divest any funds from FIA through that timeframe. So I'm going to keep it short and sweet unless there's any questions.
Hey, John, a couple of questions from me. Um, on the actual, uh, last page, we've got the Pell Grant, $4.7 million, uh, coming in. And what's that? What is that based on?
It's based on student need. Um, so as students spill out their FAFSA, apply for financial aid and go through the process. Um, that's the first large dispersment that comes into the college. And so based on, based on need, some students receive, um, the, the full Pell threshold amount. Um, it can be prorated again based on what their need is. And then we'll continue to call those funds down throughout the semester.
I see. Yeah, I know with, with, um, with our discussions about enrollment, you know, potential, you know, swings there. Just curious what this actual amount was, was being based on, given it's a projection.
Gotcha. Sure. This is based on a 10% decline in enrollment for the fall semester.
10%, gotcha. Okay. Excellent. And then also there's a line for direct loan?
Yes.
Wha- what is, what is that for?
Yep. So, uh, in some instances, students will request direct loans to help cover the cost of their bill. Um, if they're not Pell eligible or for other living expenses. Um, so basically those funds, again, similar to Pell, they come in, they're applied to the student's bill. Uh, they come in, they're applied to the student's bill. Um, and again, it happened, it works in the same fashion as, as cooldowns do for the Pell. Um, we would call those funds in once those, um, direct loans are awarded to the students and dispersed.
Got it. Okay. And the last question from me is, uh, pro-card expense? What does that represent?
Sure. Um, so most of our transactions, um, for most of our invoices, I should say, are processed through our accounts payable department and checks are issued to vendors or, or e-checks. Um, in some instances, we have procurement card. Uh, we use a procurement card for certain invoices. Usually they're one-time expend, expenditures. Um, so you can see that's a much smaller portion as compared to the AP expenses.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions to John? Okay, great. Thanks, John. Uh, moving along, our 2020 revenue and spending report.
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, this spending report is through June 30th. Uh, starting off with the sources of funds, you can see we had a slight uptake in the state appropriation, uh, 1%. Those were funds in the narrative, if you would like to refer to that, funds that came in from the Commonwealth, uh, for state appropriation after the revised, after the revised budget. Um, the other highlight under sources of funds would be the uses of reserves, um, given that right now we're forecasting about $2.3 million as a surplus. Uh, we didn't, we didn't see the necessity to divest the $100,000 that was originally allocated uh, for value stream and e-signature. Otherwise, everything else under sources of funds, uh, was tre, was on track to the, to the revised budget. Uh, moving on down to the sources of funds, as you can see, uh, full-time salaries were on track to the revised budget. Uh, the part-time salaries, uh, there was a decrease about 218,000, 175,000 of that were from the 80 suspended uh, part-time employees, uh, that we did on April 17th. So we recognized about $175,000 worth of savings there. Uh, under utilities, having been on campus, you can see what, uh, right now we are estimating to have for savings in, in utilities. Uh, moving on down, uh, under operationals, uh, under operation, again, not being on campus and not having conferences to go to, um, and office supplies, uh, we, we are estimating about a 400, you know, uh, forecast about a $490,000, uh, savings there, which is about, you know, 5%. Under reserves and foundation expenses, again, those were the, um, the value stream consulting came in under budget and also the e-signature, not having been on campus. Some of the activities that and trainings that were scheduled, uh, did not take place, um, at, at this point, uh, as of June 30th. So there, there was, there was some savings there. Uh, under the contingency line, again, uh, you know, there's a 21% we're forecasting. Again, what happened there, we budgeted conservatively, knowing that there was going to be some COVID, uh, related expenses, um, in that, for the college. But there were grants, uh, that has some ex, excess monies available. So we applied some of the, some of those COVID expenses to, um, to, to, to that, the line item. And the big one, uh, from the last conversation was around the, the facilities projects. As you can see, we are budgeting down about a million 62. Uh, there's seven, of that, $700,000 is from the discontinued program for cosmetology. Uh, that was budgeted for FY 20 and we deferred, uh, 362,000 from the renovation of the fire escapes around campus at this point. So as you can see right now, we are forecasting about a $2.3 million surplus that will go into reserves and does not, and will not, um, we're not, is not being used and can't be used to offset FY 21 budget deficits.
Hey, Joe.
Yep.
Question for you. So what's the difference between the third column from the right and the third column from the left?
The actual and, oh, that's, um, wha- what you're looking at there is we still have accrued entries still, still to make, uh, um, you know, because we're on the accrual basis of accounting. And there, there's various invoices that are still being, they're, they're still being paid. So the third column from the left are actual what we've, you know, what we've already paid out. And the third column from the right are what we're still expecting to pay out. Because even though we're beyond, we're beyond June 30th, our accounts payable is not, we don't close that till like the last and the July, beginning of August for, for the fiscal year.
Right. So 630 fiscal year, the, the, the true interpretation of where we're going to land is the third column from the right, not the third column from the left?
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
Yep. Any, any other questions?
One more question from me. So
Sure.
Line 12, the, the use of reserve for value stream. Why is that a, why is that a use of reserves in the source of funds category, not a use of funds?
A use of funds in the reserves?
Yeah, we're, we're showing it as a source of funds when, when the value stream mapping was us paying out for the service. So why are we listing it? Why are we listing it in the source of funds category as opposed to a use of funds?
Because, well, right, I mean, there is, well, right there, that the use, the sources of funds is, you know, we had, we were using reserves to, to pay for them both. Okay. As in trying to balance, you know, as we looked at it and trying to, and also trying to, you know, balance the budget and also, uh, trying to be transparent, uh, with that. Um, and then when you look at, what line is it under here? Under line 21B, there's, there's your expense right, right there, the $100,000. And there's, you know, we're estimating, there's, uh, 42,000. That's, that's going to be left out of that 100,000. Again, because of, you know, the value stream coming in under budget or the consult, consultancy. And also for the e-signature, not all, not all the trainings and everything have, have been able to happen yet. So you, so you're, you're basically showing your, you know, your, your revenues and then you're offsetting it with, uh, your, your expenses in two separate line items to be really transparent.
Oh, I see. It wasn't clear to me that line 21B was for the value stream mapping.
Yes.
It was, it was clear to me that, that line 12 was, but not line 21B was. Okay. That makes sense. Good. My next question is going to be, why is it zero? Cause I know we, we paid for the service, but it's not, it showed up down below.
But again, that's Mac, that's why I mentioned earlier, you know, the uses of reserves is, you know, with a $2.3 million deficit, it just, it just made no sense to pull $100,000 out of reserves when you already have a surplus at the end of the year. And again, this is all due to, you know, it's all due to COVID, not being on campus and all these savings happening.
Right. No, I get that. I was just trying to do my homework before the meeting. So we're going to have to ask you the question, but unfortunately, it wasn't clear without, without having you with me. Any, any other questions?
Yeah. Joe, I have a question. This is Jeff. Um, the tax surplus of 2,329, what can that be used for going into 2021 budget?
Uh, really, under state law, it, it goes into surplus, Jeff. And then only, only if, um, only if the board approves it to be used for, you know, usually one-time expenditures in FY 21. But that, it would need board approval, uh, for, for, for that, any of that money to be used in FY 21.
Okay.
Which we typically try, you know, we, we typically try to stay within our means and not, you know, not, not dig into our bank account every time, you know, to, to, to balance, um, you know, to balance new fiscal years.
Yep.
Just so, just so you don't have really a structural deficit, you know, I was dipping into, uh, into your savings. Into your Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to the facilities report, again, as I, as I mentioned before, you can see, um, you know, we started the fiscal year of 5.39 million. Uh, right now, we have, uh, the total, you know, we've exhausted the prior year of the 859. And right now we stand at, you know, 2.9 million dollars. A million 62 of that, as I had mentioned before, from the cosmetology project being cut and the fire escaped, uh, the $362,000 being deferred to out years. It's a million 62. So right now we're down to about one, you know, 1.8 million dollars, um, that will roll over into the new fiscal year, um, to finish off those remaining projects. And that 1,062 did add, was, was part of that, you know, one, uh, 2.3 million dollar deficit. I mean, deficit surplus, sorry.
Right, right.
Any, any questions on this? Nope. Okay. Moving, moving on along to the 21 budget. Uh, for this one, decided to, uh, again, you know, we're only, we're only, uh, two and a half weeks into the new fiscal year. And for, as a point of reference, I did, we did supply, uh, there, there is, uh, a board of trustee approved FY 21 budget along, uh, on the backside of this PowerPoint for, for your reference. But basically what we know today, um, as you, as you've heard me say before, the 27.9 million dollars was the governor's budget, which had come out at the end of January. Um, in the last couple of weeks, we have been notified, uh, from the DHE that, uh, we would have about a 4% reduction already in our state appropriation, uh, reducing it by about 1.1 million dollars to you, what you see there to the 26.8 million. Um, and again, just a point of reference, you know, if, if the total cuts, you know, if we had another 15%, we would be losing, you know, a loss of about 4, 4.2 million dollars there. Um, the other thing, uh, worth mentioning for the 21 budget right now is the fall semester enrollment is tracking at about 8% down year over year, which would equate to about 1.7 million dollars. But as Jonathan mentioned before, we, we've already budgeted down 10%, so we are within budget still at this point. Um, and also the full-time salaries, um, you can see there's been a change of about 1.6 million dollars after reductions and, you know, reductions and retrenchments and the, the, uh, no non-u, non-unit professional, uh, merit increases have been frozen. So that equates about, you know, 1, 1.6 million dollars right there. Um, when we look at the facilities line, again, as we did for FY 20, for FY 21.
Hey, Joe, let me, can I, it's Mary Kate. Can I jump in and just go back to that slide? So, um, per the DHE recommendation, we've already heard that we have a 4% reduction. What are we hearing from them about potentially when you're going to hear again, or what is happening, uh, to state budgets? Where, where are we with the communications?
Yeah, right. Yeah, right now, Mary Kate, what's hap, I mean, as everybody knows, the tax, the, uh, income tax revenues, uh, were due July 15th. Um, so they're waiting, uh, A and F right now is doing all their calculations to see, you know, where they're following in with their projected revenues from, from the income tax, um, line item and also with their capital gains. And again, there's, there's, they're all still waiting to see, you know, where, where is that deficit for the Commonwealth going to fall? Is it going to fall at, you know, 4 billion, 5 billion, 6 billion dollars? And again, the, you know, the big, uh, the big bear in the room is whether the Harrows Act is going to be approved at the federal level and what, and if it is, you know, what will trickle down to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts from that? So there's still a lot of moving parts right now in regards to that, but they are saying at this point, you know, besides this 4% reduction that they're telling us uh, that we're going to get is to expect, uh, more 9C cuts at this point. Not knowing again what the Harrows Act, even if it goes through at the federal level, will, what revenues it will bring into the Commonwealth.
So in just one more quick question. So in general, to those statements, any ETA? Um, I know they have to figure out revenues and everything, but what historically, when have you heard from the state if there were going to be decreases in, as past practice?
Uh, past practice, it could be anywhere throughout the fiscal year. Again, right now, what they're saying is not to expect to hear anything until September, October timeframe at the earliest.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Joe, additional question. So the 27, 976 for fiscal year 2020, where is that on the spending report that we just, just went over?
On the revenue and spending report?
Yeah, I, I, I expected to see it there and I, I didn't. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm, I'm following it correctly.
Okay. I'm just pulling it out. Yeah. If you, Mac, if you look at the, um, it's the revised, it's the revised budget on the, it's the second column from the left. You see it right there? It says 27.976385. That's a little, yeah, it's a little off from that because of, uh, some, some revenues that had come, had come in.
It, it said final amount. I think that what threw me was, you know, I wasn't looking at, when it said final amount, I wasn't looking at budget anymore. I was looking at, you know, kind of what we actually got.
Okay.
As opposed, as opposed to that, that, that's what got me off. And then the, the, the last comment, the 1.6 million dollar change versus what, versus what?
That, that was the change from, from the, uh, what we had originally budgeted for, for FY 20, for, for 21, for the full-time salary line. Cause we had originally budgeted Mac and approved, it was 27 million, about 20, about 27.9 million dollars we had, that, that was approved. And from, you know, from re, retrenchments and nine unit raise freezes, uh, all that equated to 1.6 million, which now will bring that full-time salary line down to 25.5 million dollars from the 21.9.
Got it. That was 2021.
Yes.
God, okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, moving on to the next slide, uh, for the 21, uh, facilities budget, as again, on the right-hand side, I mean, the left-hand side, you can see that was the 20 uh, information I just talked about. And for the 21, we'll be looking at about 1.1 million dollars, um, about in, in reduction. So again, it's for FY 21, it's cuts of 300,000 for the cosmetology, because the cosmetology project we had estimated at a million dollars. So 700,000 for FY 20 and 300,000 for FY 21. So that was cut out of the 20 and 21 budget accordingly, what you see there. And also for the FY 20, there's, there's deferred, uh, amounts of money there that, uh, the Commonwealth through D-CAM gave every community college $375,000 to use as they please. And to also, you could use it to defer um, any FY 21 expenses and projects that you already had on, on our capital plan. So that's what we did. Um, so right now, again, for FY 21, we are reducing our capital line by 1.1 million dollars.
I don't see that number, Joe. Where do you see the 1.1 million? Is that, is that FY 2021 deferred total?
Yeah, if you add up, if you add up the 21 columns, it's 750,000 dollars. And then, and then, um, yeah, the, the 375 is not on there. And that's why I'm, I'm just telling you about it. You know, it's, it's D-CAM had provided the community colleges, again, with 375, um, top set, the 3.1 million dollar line, uh, that we have budgeted. And again, um, it's FY 20, as you recall, is a million 62. That's, you know, that's pushed into reserves. And for FY 21 is 1.1 million dollars. And then, you know, depending on where the fiscal year goes, and if we, you know, as we, if we need to come up with any more reductions or and see where the budget goes, I mean, that's all to be determined at this point, depending on, uh, again, given the, uh, the unknowns of the state appropriation and, uh, enrollments, uh, where, what we might have to, other cuts that we might have to make. Uh, but again, that's all, that's all in a holding pattern right now until, until we get further information. Any, any questions? So again, you know, the FY 21 So again, you know, the FY 21, very, very, uh, very fluid and, um, a lot of moving parts at this point. No questions?
No questions.
Okay.
Okay. Review our program discontinuations.
Uh, Nanette, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna drive this one. Nanette?
Yes. Yes.
Could you, could you unshare your screen or some, and then I'll bring up mine?
Yes, John, um, okay, there you go.
Joe, you have the screen share. There you go. Yep.
Yeah, it's coming up. It's just, uh, it's a little slow. Perfect. Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so again, uh, Dr. DeBurley and I will be presenting on what factors the college utilized to arrive at its decision on which programs to discontinue. Uh, it's a, as everybody knows, it's a very difficult time and we needed, and the necessity and, and and necessarily program and personnel decisions had to be made, given the forecasting, uh, that we just talked about earlier. We have program data for the seven discontinued programs as well as the program data for other programs. On this slide, the, the slide shows the two main revenue streams for the college, state appropriation and tuition and fees. Combined, they account for 90% of the STC revenues, which seven, which full-time salaries account for 50% of revenues. With the Commonwealth facing a deficit of about $6 billion, uh, per the D, DHE guidance, we have already implemented a 4% reduction, as I mentioned earlier, uh, to the state appropriation for FY 21. Additional 9C cuts are still expected over the next few months. That could range from 5 to 20%. The college is estimating a 10% decrease in enrollment, which equates to about 2.2 million dollar loss. Coupled with the, with a 10% decrease in state appropriation, the college is estimating a financial deficit of approximately $5 million. With this context, we want to share with you the key considerations that went into the rationale for the decisions made. In, in consultation with academic affairs, a program cost analysis model was developed. This is a map, this is mapped against all the SEC programs and is shared with fa, with faculty during their program review process. Figures shared with trustees may differ from those considered during the union MCCC bargaining due to the uncertainty of the state appropriation, which was not included in the attached calculations that was provided in your packet for your review. In arriving at this decision of which programs to consider for discontinuation, college focused on enrollments, completion, carrying costs, net loss and infrastructure facility needs. All four together not necessarily apply to the programs in the decision-making process, but one or more points were taken into account when making the final decision on which programs to discontinue.
Hey, so thanks, Joe. Uh, slide four provides trustees the fall and spring enrollment numbers for the discontinued programs. As can be seen in the note in the bottom left-hand corner, the total farce, total fall semester headcount for these programs equals 139 students. Uh, 2.7% of all STCC enrollment that semester. After accounting for attrition and graduation, there remain approximately 90 students to be taught out. Note, two of the programs, dental assisting, sorry, dental assistant and cosmetology are one-year certificate programs. While automotive, landscape and biotech also offer certificate programs, new students are often admitted in the spring term. Consequently, the fall students are not necessarily the same students as in the spring.
Quick, quick question, Dr. DeBurley. So are, when you say fall and spring, are you referring to fall of 2021, this upcoming year?
No. Sorry, I'm giving you fall of 19 and spring of, of 20.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, on slide five, uh, as noted in slide three, uh, that, uh, Joe mentioned, the considerations regarding program discontinuance varied. For example, regarding infrastructure, automotive has an aging or better-stated and aged fleet. The newest vehicle is a 2007 Prius. The building has a $6 million, has $6 million in deferred maintenance. An enabling move for cosmetology from building 20 to building 27, uh, cost approximately a million dollars. The dental assisting program, as we'll look, has 290,000 in expenses with an annual operating loss of 175,000 and completions of about six to 12 students per year. Four programs, biotechnology, biomedical engineering technology, civil engineering technology and landscape design have low program enrollments, somewhere in the 18, 18 students or less. And consequently, even lower course enrollments and completions. These programs have been running, uh, courses with two to five students in them. And this naturally has fiscal implications, which leads us to the next slide.
Hey, uh, we had to make these tough choices because of fiscal sustainability, facility, infra, and infrastructure and providing the co, the program cost. We wish it weren't so. Under fiscal sustainability, the community college model is not sustainable without the influx of state funding, which accounts for about 50% of STCC's revenues. With the college facing a deficit of approximately $5 million, the discontinuation of these programs, along with other operational cuts, were necessary in order to preserve larger programs. Facilities and infrastructure, as Dr. DeBurley mentioned earlier, building 25, which houses the automotive program, currently carries $6 million in deferred maintenance and requires a significant investment in car fleet and equipment. Similarly, with building 20, school of health stabilization initiative, the cosmetology department needed to be relocated to another location on campus. Renovation costs were estimated, as I had mentioned earlier, to be about approximately $1 million, which in this current climate is, would be no longer feasible. On the program comparisons, as noted, none of the programs at the community college are fiscally sound, even with state appropriation, particularly in STC's case with 315 are fiscally sound, even with state appropriation, particularly in S C's case with three hundred and fifteen million dollars in deferred maintenance. The figure in the Excel spreadsheet that was attached to this, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at it, or that you received in the attached. As you can see from the attached, this S T C program data and analysis spreadsheet, all the programs carry some sort of operational loss. The figures in the Excel spreadsheet you received as a separate attachment also provide significant overhead costs that must necessarily be attributed when conducting a program cost analysis. Hence, the high cost of program delivery at S T C C, for example, a draw your attention to the nursing program within enrollment of about two hundred students carries a significant loss. This is in the case for all our allied health programs. This is due to the accreditation requirements, instructions, student ratios, and clinical placement ratios, as well as the equipment and faci- faculty necess- necessary to deliver the programs. Added to that, our indirect overhead cost, as you can see in the nursing loss at about one eight, one point eight million dollars, compare this with Fire Science, which has no full-time faculty and fifty students still carries a hu- still carries a loss of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Just a quick note, you know, with math- mathematics is a multiple course offering, offering several, I mean, serving almost all the S T C programs. It is considered a service department as our English and Biology. That is, students from the three major schools must take courses in those departments. Mathematics has robust course enrollment, and still it carries a loss.
So as no- as noted by Joe in the program cost analysis, depending on how we look at the state appropriation, nearly all of our programs lose money, including, as you heard, mathematics, which is part and parcel of nearly every program at the college. Consequently, the difficult decisions as to which programs to discontinue were based upon program and course enrollments, completion rates, and or infrastructure costs. We remain a technical community college with multiple health programs, serving around seven hundred students, and technical offerings serving around eleven hundred students. Some examples are computer information technology, energy systems, the H VAC, graphic arts and photography, mechanical engineering technology, robotics and electrical engineering. Approximately thirty one hundred students are enrolled in the liberal and professional studies. Demographics are very much a consider- a consideration for the college and within programs. As a reminder, overall, S T C C is thirty percent Latinx and about fourteen percent African-American. We also know a significant number of students indicate other. And overall, for the college, that category is about seven percent. In discontinued programs, we see some proportionality with the college overall. Of the hundred and twenty five students from fall in these programs, other was eight percent student ethnicity. But there are also participation gaps. For example, last fall, eleven of the thirty-three cosmetology students were Latina. That's thirty three percent, but there were only three African-American students enrolled. In landscape, two-thirds, that's ten out of the fifteen students that were enrolled last fall were white. Again, we note that top to bottom, S T C C has worked to ensure all of our programs are representing the growing diversity of Springfield in particular. The overall stability of S T C C and its ability to serve the commun- the community is the priority. And with that, we open for questions.
Yeah, thank, thanks for the, the update. It's really good to hear that there was a lot of factors involved and that you guys considered, uh, in making the decision, uh, for the, these seven programs. I, I would like for each of the Ways and Means Committee members to get a copy of that cost model, so we can see the detail that you guys went through in, in this evaluation. So if you could send, send us that, that would be, that would be helpful. It, it would be nice to get that soon. So it's, it's top of mind right now for us. So it'd be, it'd be great to get that by, before end of day tomorrow. And I think you have our email addresses, I believe. Great. I don't, Neneta does.
Mac, okay, well, I, um, will make some comments at the end, but I'll, I'll let the, uh, the staff continue, um, with their report.
Any other questions? Okay, Joe, you want to say something?
No, no, I was just gonna say we're, we're at the questions from the, uh, from the board section. So I think we're, I'm good. Jerry, you all sat on your side? Yep, I think we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, so let me, um, Mac, if I may, I, I want everyone to, to know that I have received, um, a, a joint letter written from S T C P A A U C requesting to be placed on, um, this meeting and a subsequent Board of Trustee meeting from Dr. Gorman. Um, it is my understanding that the M triple C representatives are currently engaged in contractual consultation process with the college concerning these proposed changes um, as negotiated by the collective bargaining agreement. To that end, I would like to request any and all comments from, um, faculty, staff, students, and the public to be submitted to Nanette Flores, who is the clerk of the S T C C trustees. Uh, her email address is N Flores, so N F L O R E S at S T C C dot E D U. Um, all of correspondence will be compiled and in very short order will be forwarded to all of the Board of Trustees, um, for review, um, in time for any type of conversations that we do have next week. Um, so again, any and all public, um, and correspondence should be sent, um, to the clerk of the trustees, uh, Nanette, and you can find her email online. Thanks, Mac. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mayor Kate. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing on a value stream initiative.
And you're on mute. Thank you. I apologize. Um, if we could move to the, the next slide, please. Um, thank you. Um, so I'd like to start by reiterating that the Value Stream Initiative's overall goal was to leverage reserve funds to identify savings, enhance value, develop efficiencies, and change practices to aid new student enrollment. At the last Ways and Means Committee meeting, I provided a brief value stream update in advance of the final reports being sent out. The trustees have heard from the consultant, and both the consultant's report and college management's report have since been provided to trustees. Two key outcomes can be taken away from this initiative. We have indeed enhanced value and savings have been realized. We'll discuss both in greater detail in the upcoming slides. Finally, the next steps include focusing on students of color and engaging an equity consultant. We're particularly keen to understand how students of color contend with the process of matriculating as well as retaining at S T C C. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to V P Kemp to provide you with some examples of how we enhance value for our students.
Thank you, Jonathan, and good evening. You'll see on the slide a visual representation of the new student checklist. On the left is pre-value stream, and on the right is post-value stream process. With a solid communication plan, students will have a greater confidence in their ability to succeed. And you can witness visually that it's more clear in how it outlines the methods and the timing of the student onboarding process. We really want to emphasize that students need to gain confidence in their processes so that they can feel confident in their ability to succeed. If we move on to the next slide, you'll start to see a representation of the value stream process and how it's currently living in our, uh, you know, post, uh, COVID, uh, post-campus curtailment environment. Chat Now is our online, uh, engagement tool used by frontline staff. It's, the tool has been used, uh, for many years. It goes back to about two thousand and eleven for our records. And it was used primarily by advising, and then later on, the Health and Wellness Center was onboarded. You can see that we have added a number of offices and departments to our operator's schedule. So not only are we engaging with students, uh, on a more frequent basis, but our operators are able to, uh, refer and or pull in colleagues into conversations when a student has a question that might cross different departments. And if we can move to the next slide, you'll see that Chat Now is following the natural flow of the student onboarding process, beginning with lots of admissions inquiries, funneling students through to academic advising. And then, as they make their way through the checklist, increased conversations and questions as they relate to student financial services as well as information technology. With that, I'll turn it back over to Jonathan.
Thank you. So in conclusion, this final slide summarizes the savings that we discussed last month. The target was to recognize savings equivalent to three times the cost of the consultant. As Lean Transformations Group charged thirty eight thousand dollars for the engagement, the target savings was a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. You can see that the savings from part-time employees, postage, and transitioning new student orientation online, the annual savings totaled a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars and exceeded the target by fifty thousand. Vice President Kemp and I would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
I just, uh, like to, you know, really say that, uh, this, you guys handled this well. And, uh, the report out is excellent, uh, and it just shows that this is, uh, you know, was taken seriously, and you put the money in, in effort to good use, and seriously, and you put the money in, in effort to good use.
Thank you.
And, and I think to, to that point, um, I think it was maybe a Ways and Means, maybe the last month or the month before, is that could have been prior to COVID. But Jonathan, what is the plan moving forward with continuing with, uh, value stream mapping? Or what, what's that decision, given that it's these unprecedented times?
Darcy, did you wanna to discuss the steps moving forward?
Yes, thank you, Jonathan. We've realized that this has become an embedded process across various departments and divisions. And so we are continuing to see movement, um, in the, the line, in the light of value streaming. So, uh, you saw in the report that student financial services, for example, cross-trained the advising office to read financial aid screens to be able to better assist students as they had them on the phone already connecting with them. We have since also now included our testing and placement center team as well. So when a student participates in new student orientation, for example, they go one of two pathways. One, they either go to testing and placement, or they go directly to advising. So now, no matter with what path the student is taking, uh, our teams are equipped to help, uh, push them through and hand them off to the next step in the onboarding process. So we envision that process continuing as we move forward and continuing the relationships and the collaborations between, uh, registration, student financial services, and student affairs.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Kemp.
Any other questions?
I would just add one more thing, and that is that, uh, you know, we, we had this cost savings and we delivered, we, we will be delivering a, a better quality experience to the students. And this doesn't take any, anything away from the students, and I think that was the spirit of, uh, you know, that we entered this with, uh, you know, from the trustee's standpoint was we wanted to do things that, we wanna attack waste in a way that doesn't, you know, that enhances the student experience. And I believe that you guys have captured, uh, exactly that which we had hoped to, to do. So, you know, I'm just very happy.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a comment. This is Jeff. Um, when a student goes through the whole process, is there any kind of a questionnaire or survey of their experience? You know, do we, are we getting feedback from the student after they go through this process?
That's something I can definitely, um, look into and report back on. I know it's something that we've talked about. I'm not certain that it's fully developed. What I can do is that it is done in a step-by-step fashion through the Chat Now feature, through the transcripts. We do get transcripts of all of the Chat Now conversations. And so the team is able to work together to create unified approaches and answers to the questions that the students, um, are posing and continue to sort of revise their frequently asked questions, uh, page. But I'm happy to explore further, you know, as a result of participating in this new student onboarding process, what student perceptions and experiences are.
And, thank you.
Absolutely.
And if, if I can add to that, um, through this process on a smaller sample, uh, there was a focus group of twenty students where, um, they were tracked throughout the process from application through registration. Um, and there was a number of phone calls, um, and communications that took place to those students to identify what their experience has been, um, what barriers they may have perceived throughout various steps of the process. Um, that's a smaller step, um, I believe, to respond to your question.
Great. Thank, thanks, Jonathan. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanna congratulate the process because I think when you cross-train, um, several members of the staff, and so there's consistent messaging, and students aren't feeling like they're being bounced around, or when they go from one department to the next, they're being told something different, when they're already in a very stressful time, um, on their quest to just be successful, um, I think this, this approach is, is really important, and, um, I like it. So, great job on that part.
Great. Thanks. Well, thanks for the update, Dr. Kemp and Jonathan. Very, very good, very well done. And I also want to thank, um, Trustee Hagopian, you know, for pushing the concept here, you know, and we're seeing great results, and certainly, as we talked, uh, our last meeting, we certainly want to see this continuing. This isn't a one-and-done. So great that, great with this current results and look forward to seeing more of this going forward. With that, our president perspective.
Evening, everyone. Let me, uh, let me share my screen. Just one, one slide as a backdrop. Everybody can see that, okay?
Yes.
First, a, a few notes of appreciation. I appreciate our trustees toggling back and forth between fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty one. There's, there's certainly some considerations, uh, that warranted discussion projects, funding sources, and even the accounting practices that drive some of that. So I, I appreciate how you've followed that. Obviously, as we transition now into fiscal year twenty one, um, there's, there's really some significant considerations, and you have a, a great opportunity tonight to have heard from a number of our administrators. There has been a tremendous amount of work, time, and effort that has gone into our decisions, as difficult as they may be. Uh, we are adapting, uh, and I know that that is also a painful process. If we saw around value streaming, uh, what that meant in the change of our practice, obviously, these, uh, program choices are, are a version of, uh, uh, changing that are hard, albeit, uh, necessary. And, and I think you've heard, um, the rationale with great clarity this evening. For me, just a few notes, um, one, I wanted to, uh, offer that robust communication continues. May, June, and July have been remarkable as we all continue to contend with pandemic in our, in our lives in all kinds of ways. And we, the college, of course, has a number of key stakeholders. Uh, and so that's why we do town halls. We have campus-wide emails, um, emails and phone calls, uh, from me to you as trustees. Calls to NETI, the New England Commission on Higher Education, around our programs and our choices. I've made multiple phone calls to Dr. Carlos Santiago, the Commissioner of High Education. Press releases, discussions, uh, with our unions. You can see the cabinet itself, president, uh, with vice presidents and assistant. We've met ten times, uh, just since this, uh, first of May. So it is a remarkable time, and we will continue to, to redouble these efforts to ensure everyone is engaged. Again, oftentimes with information that is, that is less than ideal. As a backdrop, you may have seen, uh, the headline today on Mass Live, uh, UMass Amherst. I think I saw a figure of thirty million dollars they mean, they need to cut. And of course, our hearts go out to American International College, um, with some of the fiscal considerations that they're grappling with. I saw both of those in the news today. Uh, this is our backdrop, you know, um, to, to pull out one of the quotes, uh, from the, the board chair, Chris Gabrielli, uh, for the Board of Higher Education. We do face unprecedented planning and fiscal challenges. And with our budgets in flux, you have seen that tonight, even with a great deal of forecasting and diligence underneath that. That was back in May. More recently, to the question from our, our board chair around what do we know? This morning, I was on a Zoom call, uh, just me with, uh, our state senator, uh, Jim Welch, and our state representative, Bud Williams. Uh, the three of us were having a conversation, uh, gave me a chance to share more with them this type of information. And of course, they were, they were appreciative of the difficulties that a college is in and the uncertainty. And like, quite candidly, they did not have any new news to offer on that state budget. Uh, and when we might expect to have clarity as to how public higher ed was gonna be supported. So as Secretary Pfizer notes, we are facing a very challenged fiscal, fiscal climate. We don't know where the bottom is, and we shouldn't kid ourselves. It's going to be a very challenging fiscal year. If that's from the fiscal standpoint, what I would offer is, um, the, the, we faced a, a sort of stark reminder about how complex this environment is for us to embrace and, uh, offer teaching and learning. Just this weekend, we confirmed a COVID case from a student in one of our classes. I think, as you know, uh, through the notification that we pushed out to our constituents today, we continue to try to pilot these low-density course offerings, particularly in the area of health. And there, there are a couple important reasons. One, we're trying to finish off stuff still from spring semester, but also it gives us a chance to test drive, what will fall look like? How will our protocols hold up? And from the, the number of hours that our administrators put in to first track down the information, do all the follow-up that is required of us now. Uh, it's, it's remarkable, and that is for one positive case. Again, our reality is very, very different than it was, uh, just months ago. Uh, but again, we persist, uh, the college is resolved. And again, I hope you have a very good sense, a deep sense of how we have positioned ourselves for a, a very difficult fiscal year ahead. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Any questions, Dr. Cook?
Not, not at this time, Mac. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, uh, it's any, any other business anyone wants to bring up? Okay, uh, the date of our next meeting is August seventeenth. Uh, can we have a call, um, of a role to adjourn the meeting?
Yes. Mary Kate Miren?
Aye.
Max Starks?
Aye.
Vicki Kraus? Erica Hagopian?
Aye.
Jeff Sadler?
Aye.
Janay McDonald?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Nene. I appreciate it. Uh, thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Take care.
Good night.